Okay. I'd like to call the committee of the whole budget meeting of January 30th, 2019 to order. I'd like to begin tonight's meeting by reading a safety notice. In the event of an emergency, please evacuate council chambers to the nearest exit door through the chamber doors and obey all instructions given by the clerk. Ms. Kerkakalos, would you raise your hand so people know that you will be leading us in the event of evacuation? If assistance is required, please see the clerk. Once you have evacuated the building, please gather in the front parking lot outside of Town Hall. Now, given tonight's extreme weather, I think we'll maybe go, if it does happen, pretty darn close to the front door. Also, the Town of Lincoln Committee and Council meetings are posted on our YouTube channel. I'd like to thank the public for attending the meeting this evening, and I just want to remind everyone of our rules for engagement to please be respectful while others are speaking and to please refrain from clapping. Delegations will have five minutes to speak and are asked to stay focused and on the agenda item. Please remember to silence all cellular devices. And just before I do the roll call, I just want to mention again, and everyone knows because I've seen it today as, you know, Bell Let's Talk Day, and, you know, there was a lot of programs on television and radio talking about mental illness and the stigmatism attached to it. And I just want to kind of repeat my tweet that, you know, let's try to do that 365 days of the year, not just today. Let's be open, let's try to, you know, if people are reaching out, if people are looking for help or that, let's, let's, let's try to do that. San Catherine's might be the compassionate city, Town Lincoln can be the first compassionate town in Niagara. So I throw that gauntlet down to each and every one of us here tonight, and let's try to do that. So, everyone from council is here except for the mayor, she's running late, but we will proceed without her, and she will be joining us. Staff are in attendance this evening. Are there any declarations of interest? I see none. There are no statutory public meetings on the agenda. We have no delegations this evening. We are now considering item 7.1, operating budget review. Staff will be providing a presentation on this topic. Mr. Kerkakalos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you for the first time talking about our operating budget. You'll see that as we go through the presentation, there aren't any numbers per se in terms of what we're presenting you. SMT is still finalizing that information, and towards the end of the presentation, you will see a future schedule in terms of when will we be sharing the operating budget, and then the next number of meetings as we round out February and into March and look to finalize our operating and capital budget. So I will go through the slides as quickly as possible. There are a number of slides, but all of them important, and we can take any questions that committee may have either through the presentation or when we get to the end of the presentation. So just a little bit of an overview for members of council in terms of our agenda this evening. We're going to give you a little bit of an overview and a recap of the 2018 budget. Talk a little bit about value for taxpayer dollar. We're going to set the fiscal stage in terms of both the provincial and federal landscape. We've had some recent government changes, and you'll see some, I think, very dramatic slides that speak to government funding and what that government funding looks like over the last 10 years. We're going to talk to you a little bit about today, what's going on in Lincoln, and that anticipatory look into the future, a little bit about trending, and then really lay some of the framework in terms of what we heard from council as it relates to the 2019 budget. And that, what we heard from council both comes from the meetings we've had over the last few weeks, but also in looking at and analyzing as best we can what council has already shared with us in terms of last year, but more importantly, what you heard through the budget process, what were some of the themes that came forward. We're going to talk to you a little bit about some of the community priorities that have been informed through public consultation, and then a little bit around next steps. So in terms of the operating budget overview, again, I think I've said this the last few presentations, some of this may be repetitive for those members of council that are returning, but for the members of council that are new, the operating budget really is set to pay for the day-to-day activities of the organizations. Salaries and wages, you'll see a chart in terms of a breakdown, account for a little over a third of the operating budget. That does vary from municipality to municipality. A lot of municipalities see salaries and wages account from anywhere from 50% to 70% of their operating budgets. We are close to 38%, but I'll show you that breakdown in the coming slides. Programs and services are also funded out of the operating budget, so things like grass cutting, snow removal, a number of the other general programming we have, camps, public skates and so forth, and utilities, those things that are required to make sure the building is running, the building has heat, all of those sorts of things fall under what we would consider the operating budget. Other things within the operating budget include what we deem these non-discretionary items required to maintain existing services, and I covered some of those. An additional one is those contractual increases that we see that are part of cost of living and have been negotiated in previous settlements and previous agreements. Growth, so these are both costs and revenues, and you'll see as we get into the budget over the next couple of weeks, we will be sharing both costs and revenues that have been added in terms of looking at previous year's service levels. In order to maintain the service level that we currently have, what does it cost to deliver that service? And then are we seeing any additional revenues? Some of those are in planning, for instance, some of those can be seen in fire, but that's something else that finds its way in and out of the operating budget. There's those one-time elements, and some of those are consulting studies for specific projects, projects that you would be looking at through the capital budget that require some operating consulting that happens, that comes out of your operating budget. What we consider maintenance projects and maintenance items, so things like garbage cans, park benches, replacement of, you know, minor things like that that we would look at, emergency repairs, again, things that are unplanned for that happen, that's also something that comes out of the operating budget. And of course, there's just generally operating impacts that are felt when we introduce and have new capital projects. So there are expenditures when new facilities are built or new locations are added to our holdings that find their way within the operating budget. So uncontrollable and controllable costs, I think this is the slide that we often probably spend the most amount of time, and I think is the most telling, both for residents when we talk to them, but also for members of council and ourselves as a senior management team when we look at where there are areas that either we can address or not address. And so in terms of those uncontrollable pieces, you'll see that category that I highlighted earlier, salaries, wages and benefits, and what makes up those. So we do have a negotiated cost of living increase, that is that 1.5% that you've heard me reference a few times. There's the general progression through the pay grid. So this is when we bring people on, whether they're new or not, some of them start at the lower end of the pay grid, and then there's yearly progressions through that pay grid. And so depending on what level you are in the organization or what level you are within your grid, we see impacts as it relates to pay and pay grids. There's just the general payroll benefit changes that we often experience, so we deal with our provider in terms of health benefits. On any given year, there is some minor fluctuations in terms of the increase in cost to deliver benefits. There's also the statutory requirements, things that are set by the provincial and federal government, so what we pay from an EI perspective, CPP, WSIB contributions, those also impact some of those salaries, wages and benefits. We often talk about inflation and where inflation is at. So the 2018 yearly inflation, we look at things like the construction price index, we look at the consumer price index, you see both of those characterized and reflected there, one at 2.3%, one at 4%. Cost of supplies, as you can see there, whether that's office supplies, insurance premiums, basic legal fees and consulting. One of the things that's not captured here, and I know Council Brené, for instance, sent me a copy of some presentations around construction and the construction industry. While the cost of construction and the construction price index has increased by 4%, we are sometimes seeing double-digit increases in how construction projects are actually quoted, the prices that are coming in for a number of those projects. And so while we see, you know, things like a 4% increase or a 2.5% increase, often what we're seeing in reality is significantly higher, and that is based on the assumption that we can even find enough contractors to do the work that is required to do. So utilities, communications and commodities, so things like hydro, gas and fuel, there are fluctuations in those, we're seeing some of those fluctuations now, internet and phone and what we're being charged on those things. We do have sand and salt in multi-year service agreements, we have our snow clearing contract, landscape services, animal care and control, and of course, our auditors in KPMG. And then on the other side, we have what is often referred to as more controllable or discretionary, and that is looking at the level of service we're providing, our response times, for instance, the number of programs and the types of programs we offer. Those are within our control, we can absolutely look at those and address those if we want to lessen the impact, for instance. Maintenance standards, so roads, facilities, park equipment, beautification, again, depending on decisions and how we want to start looking at things, those are what we would call controllable elements. That is not to say that those are what we're bringing forward, those are just what we would classify as controllable versus uncontrollable. External professional services, I think a lot of municipalities look at consulting and legal. We don't have in-house legal, we are outsourcing our legal advice on any given year, depending on the type of case or the type of issues that we're facing, that may increase. Those are controllable, we can look at different ways of addressing that, and I think as we go forward in 2019, you will look at us, try to bundle some of our legal costs, some of our legal advice, and through procurement, look at that. Of course, just generally, we have tens, if not 20, different service clubs that we support, both through in-kind contributions. We, we work with seniors, we work with other groups, you see them there, the library, the BA, the TVTA, all important elements of what we do, and we just, for the purposes of, I think, classifying, you know, into two categories of uncontrollable and controllable, and that is not to say some of these probably don't, I think, cast an umbrella over both areas, but those are elements that are within that controllable costs that we have. So where were we last year in terms of expenditures by category? You'll see earlier, I highlighted salaries, wages and benefits, accounts for 38% of our operating budget. I can tell you that is considerably low when you look at a number of other municipalities. As I said, they usually find half to three-quarters of their budgets account for salaries and wages and benefits in terms of their operating budgets. And then you see the breakdown there. Services and supplies is 31%. Our capital, our transfer to capital and reserves and reserve funds is 13%. Administrative is 4%, equipment, vehicles and technology, 4% and so forth. In meeting with each member of council, I did spend a lot of time talking about this because I think this is an important slide. The Town of Lincoln equates to about 35% of your tax bill, so about a third of the tax bill is what the town can control. At the end of the day, though, we deliver the entire tax bill, it has a Town of Lincoln logo on the top corner, and people often look at the number that is at the bottom. However, that can either be a curse or a challenge, or can be something that we utilize, I would say, as we move forward and we look at where the region is going, that does account for a lion's share of this budget. That may be increasingly more challenging in terms of being the one responsible for delivering that message to residents. But I think the point here that I want to emphasize again is we are only in control of about a third of your tax bill, but we are the ones that are the closest to residents or the ones, you are the ones that hear from residents when they're unhappy about service or service levels. And the expectation, whether we deliver a third, a half or all of it, is that somehow we're involved and we're looking at what the bottom line is. So value for tax dollar. Resident satisfaction and service expectation. Council has heard on a number of occasions, the fact that we've gone out, we've talked to residents, we've engaged residents more than ever, we did go out to residents and talk to them about the budget, talked to them about services, what did they want to see more, what were they happy with, and here are some of those statistics. What we're seeing is over 80% of our residents rate our delivery of program and services from that fair to excellent category, and I can tell you both anecdotally and with folks that come in on a daily basis to share information with us, that is probably a very accurate number in terms of how folks are looking at our service delivery. Have we addressed every issue, every problem? Absolutely not. Is there room for improvement? Absolutely. But overall, I would tell you, I think, what we're hearing, what I'm hearing, what the senior management team is hearing, is that overall, folks are happy with the delivery of programs and services. 60% of our residents support a tax increase. Now, we didn't ask specific questions around the level of tax increase, but a tax increase to maintain and enhance services. Now, there are certain services that residents are definitely more focused on, and we'll share a little bit more of that. So value for tax dollar, this is always an interesting slide that municipalities share in terms of for that $1, how is that apportioned to the various services that we deliver? And you see the breakdown there. Roads and sidewalks, almost 30 cents. Similarly, parks, recreation and culture, and then the other elements, economic development at 2 cents, general business and civic business administration, 16, fire services, 12, library, 7, and what we classify as some of those health and social services at 1 cent. So in 2018, we had a 2.11 blended rate in terms of a percent increase. And what you see before you is that, that impact on a per household basis for the year. One of the things that we talked about in meeting with each member of council, so how do we find a better way to tell that story? How do we find a better way to tell people what they're getting in terms of levels of service? And oftentimes, we like to use the average house is about $335,000. A lot of people will say, well, that's not what my house is appraised at. So I think when we look at doing it on a per $100,000 basis, you see the increase there at $25.89 over the last year, going all the way up to a home that's appraised at $575,000 and an increase of $148. It is about telling that story, it's about sharing, you know, the fact that we deliver 92 services, that we touch people on a daily basis, that we do everything from treat people's water to take care of their kids and to everything else in between. So I think it is an important story in terms of being public servants in terms of delivering services, but this is the impact, and this is often when we look at operating budgets where we spend a lot of time. What is the impact? What is the percentage? And often, what does that percentage mean in terms of dollars and cents? So household impact, again, picking up on the previous slide in terms of for every $100,000 of assessed value, we often like to put that into something folks can understand. And so when we talk about what does that $25 per year look like, that is less than one large coffee per week that a citizen receives the following services for. So again, I highlighted, we offer 92 different services, here's just an indication of some of those services. And when you look at that impact, you're talking, again, based on home price, but anywhere between 7 cents and 35 cents a day that people are paying more to get the same services that they got last year. We are in the service delivery business, many of you have heard me talk, our bottom line is different than the private sector. We deal with a different currency. That is not to say we shouldn't be cost-conscious, that is not to say we shouldn't be looking at how we spend each and every dollar, that is our responsibility to you, that's your responsibility to residents. But when you look at the currency we do deal with, it is trust and confidence in that service delivery. Folks really can't buy those services elsewhere, they need to come to us as long as they're living within our jurisdictional boundaries. And so we have somewhat of a monopoly on that service, so folks want to feel confident that they're getting value for that service, that they're coming in our doors, coming into our facilities, and when they're coming into those buildings, that they're getting a good level of service. So a little bit about the fiscal stage. Members of council likely have heard us talk about this infrastructure gap or the continued infrastructure gap. Some of you may have seen this particular slide, and I think this particular slide is one we've used before for you. But this says, in order for us to address that infrastructure gap, if we wanted to address that infrastructure gap, and this is something municipalities across the country are using, on average, we would need to have an eight, almost an eight and a half percent increase to fund the operating expenses and close that infrastructure gap over a 10-year timeline. Now, this is a general slide, this is an average across all municipalities, but it is something that we are all grappling with, there is an infrastructure gap in this country, there are infrastructure programs both levels of government are working at, but if we simply wanted to address that gap and start lessening that gap, we would be looking simply at 8% just to address that infrastructure gap. Now, that is not what we are proposing, but I think contextually, looking at where we are, and the chair is saying to me, why not? You know, I think it's important to look at where we are and how we compare to others. So we are not in this alone, but addressing that infrastructure gap is what is before us, and when you look at this slide, I think it's telling. So this is a slide that folks haven't seen before, it's something that I think is important, and when our finance team shared it with me in terms of our OMPF funding, so you've heard that referred to as OMPF, you've heard it referred to as the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund, however you want to refer to OMPF, the chart does not tell a good story. In 2007, we were receiving approximately, not $2 million, but a million, over a million and a half, and 12 years later, we have, are approximating this year that we will be getting $305,000. So it is a quarter of what we were receiving a little over 10 years ago. And so you'll see on the next slide how that becomes a challenge for us in terms of the services we need to deliver, the increased pressures in terms of households, and the gap that we need to make and how we're going about addressing that gap, so. When we look at projected households, and I like to use my hands when I describe this, and I think I said this to every member of council that I met with, one chart is going down this way, and the other chart looks like this. And this gap over here is what you've charged us with trying to lessen and trying to address on top of addressing needs and all of those other things. So this little arrow here in yellow that addresses that gap, what we've tried to do over the years is find efficiencies, deliver programs in a more efficient and better way, try to find savings where we have them. But at the end of the day, on top of an increased demand in service delivery from our community, on top of increasing costs and pressures, there is also decreasing funds that we're receiving directly from the provincial government. Now, for specific projects, for specific programs, we have been very successful in terms of being able to get money from senior levels of government, but they are very much project-specific. On the operating side, in terms of what municipalities look at, and this particular fund and the funding we receive, you are seeing a trend that is something, again, we want council to be aware of, and we are aware of when we look at budgets. Now, we haven't received the 2019 confirmed number, this is based on our best, our best guess, some intelligence we're getting. We did get the first release of our 2019 OMPF funding, but you can see last year's was 359, and so we're projecting that to be going down to 305. And I think if you're looking at what we're hearing from the provincial government, this is probably a very accurate estimate in terms of where we're going to find ourselves this year. So as we look at the present and to the future, I think, again, with that context, and I try not to share that in a way that is meant, I think, in any way to scare council, just to give you a reality in terms of the decisions in front of us, what we are grappling with, and the trade-off conversations that I think we will be having, and we've started having as well. So some demographics and trends, our resident population, our land area, our increase in population, what that looks like from a male/female perspective, our average age, some numbers that you've heard before, birth and where we're seeing the majority of our population in that 15 to 64 range. I think sometimes we assume we've got a very old population and a young population, but when we look at those numbers, we do have a lot that are nestled in between that 15 to 64. The number of households, how fast we're growing, our projected population growth, so we've talked about the new subdivisions that are coming on and how those impact services and the demand on services, and then our job growth. So some good numbers, just some awareness for members of council in terms of demographics. You've heard me talk about the number of services we provide and the diversity of those services, and what we're challenged with collectively, the two of us as a team, council and staff, in terms of doing, and that is how we balance affordability and at the same time continue to deliver service. So a small sample of those 90 programs and services for you, I think it's always important to look at what we're doing, almost 2,000 water samples, 21,000 kilometers of winter road activities, 2,000 transit pickups, we have 117,000 square feet of recreational facilities to operate and program, 1,400 who have participated in our museum programming, 400 bylock complaints investigated, 368 building permits issued, responding to over 750 emergencies, over 276,000 unique page views to Lincoln.ca, and over 40 public meetings and public information centers. So again, just a little bit of how those 90 programs and services impact residents on a daily basis. So I think I've shared some of this information with folks when they, when they've been asking me about this in the community, but in terms of members of council, some of you have heard me talk about this particular number, you'll hear more about it from Kathleen when she brings her reports forward, but this is the first time in Lincoln's history we have ever broken the $100 million mark. I think this is a huge, huge accomplishment, it is a massive indicator of economic activity, of economic development, of construction, of the confidence people have. I will spend probably another 30 seconds singing the praises of this particular item. I've highlighted it in red here because I think it's important. That is more than double last year and considerably higher than anything we've ever done in the past when we look at 2013, at 78 million. So $127 million in building construction value, and I will start talking about what that means then. So how does that translate into what we do? Because it's easy to look at 127 million, to send a media release out, to talk about how great this is and what we're doing, to look at construction value as an indicator of all those wonderful things I talked to you about, but when you go and you start looking at the back-of-house things that are required, the work finance has to do in terms of a CIP program, the work communications has to do to engage residents when we're looking at a project on Green Lane that may be contentious, to look at economic development, expediting applications, or working with the provincial and federal governments to get clearance for certain things. There is a complex amount of work required to deliver $127 million. If any of you go in to see Andrew and Ben's desk, you will see the piles of yellow paper that are stacked up on them. If you go into, I think, anybody's office, you'll see that. So I don't want to spend a ton more time talking about this, but a huge, a huge accomplishment, something we should all applaud, but with it comes all the other work in order to deliver it, so. Construction value and service demands, we were trying to figure out how to tell you that story around what does that mean? So you get new construction, you have residential, commercial, industrial and institutional. That all, in whatever proportion it happens to fall in, is important. It's good that we have to fall in, is important. It's good that we have that diversity of new construction. With that new construction, we get new infrastructure, a lot of it borne by the developer, whoever's doing the building, or the redevelopment of the construction. So some of that's roads, it's water, it's sewers, it's the parks that come with these subdivisions. What does that then lead to? Leads to more people. It leads to new residents. It leads to new employees, and it leads to tourists. Again, all good things, all things that are important, and by no means should anyone, should members of council look at that as any way a negative. It just means we need to prepare as an organization, as a community, for what that looks like. So as your senior management team, as your staff, what we're doing is starting to look at, so what does that mean as we look to the next one, two, three, four, or five years? We are trying to look forward. We are trying to be anticipatory. We are trying to prepare. So that means us looking at, what does snow removal look like? What equipment do we need? What does road maintenance look like? Water testing, facility and park maintenance, and you see the rest there. Tax bill processing, the building and planning permits that I spoke about, the business expansion. So with more people, that drives downtown businesses wanting to expand, new businesses coming into town. How are we processing all of those and helping those people? So this really just, I think, tries to paint that picture and highlight the, I think, interrelationship between construction value and service demands. So economic context. I spoke about a couple of these earlier. 2.2% in terms of the Consumer Price Index. We're seeing energy costs at around 6.3% in terms of a year-over-year increase. We're seeing prices charged by contractors on new non-residential building construction of 2.7, an inflation rate that ranges between 1.8 and 3.1, depending on the time of year, and those are monthly fluctuations that we experience. And so these are just, again, some of the basics that are before you here in terms of service adjustments and things that we wrestle with on a monthly basis. So taxes and trends. How do we compare to others? I think we often ask ourselves, are we lower, are we higher? Where we fall as it relates to others? When we look at others, again, based on that average assessment, we are on the right side of this chart. We're where we want to be. We don't want to be on the left side of this chart. We are 23% below the average in terms of where we fall, again, with some of our comparators in the region. We are experiencing growth. That's a positive, but on the other side, we are seeing property taxes that, while for those that are on fixed income, for those that may have a challenge, we are still on, again, on the right side of this particular chart. At our last meeting, I presented this slide around taxpayer affordability, and yes, this does take into account ability to pay and a number of other factors. But again, we are at the right side. On this particular slide, we're near the top, which is a good thing. On the other slide, we were near the bottom, which is also a good thing. So second lowest in terms of property taxes as a percent of household income, and as I said, yes, we do have a higher household income, but those are all factors. This is how all municipalities are measuring themselves. And then when we incorporate our water and sewer rates, we are the fourth lowest. So as we head into 2019... Some of the trends municipalities generally are dealing with, a changing community landscape and service demands, greater accountability and performance. These are all things that you're hearing municipalities talk about. How are we assessing our performance? Folks want accountability. They want transparency. They want all those things. They want to know how we make decisions, why we make decisions. There is, of course, just the change in our political landscape. There's pressures and affordability of infrastructure, innovative approaches to delivering programs and services, the sustainability piece that we've talked about, the need to have asset management plans. These are things that are being legislated and mandated. Increased support and expertise to deliver complex services. Services are getting more complex to deliver. Oftentimes, when we're talking to the development community, to the construction community, you know, the easy stuff are done, so to speak. The easy developments are, have already been developed. The easy projects have already been done. Everything we're dealing with has its own intricacies, its own complexities, and so I think what you're seeing come through the door on any given day is different. It's more complex. It's a little more challenging. There's just the ongoing legislative and regulatory changes. So whether you call that red tape, however you want to refer to that, there is a changing dynamic in terms of service delivery policies and just the human resources we deal with. Timely, accessible, and transparent municipal communications. People want to know in real time how we're making decisions, what we're doing. People want to hear from us. Public policy alignment, implementation and opera, operationalization, or operationalizing our master plans and strategies, and so how do they all fit together? It's great that we're doing them. How do they come together? Challenges to resident health and the social determinants of health, inclusion, diversity, access, community development, again, all important things that we look at when we build facilities and build spaces now, or even when we do renos. Building an investment-ready Lincoln. We're seeing this council, the previous council, has put an emphasis on being investment-ready, on economic development, economic prosperity, and so being an investment-ready community. What does that mean? What are the resources we need to do that? People's strategy. I've heard from members of council, when we met over the last couple of weeks, the importance of just looking at our people, retention, people development, training, those sorts of things. How are we addressing that? Are we addressing that? What does succession planning look like? All absolutely important things that we're all wrestling with right now. That housing shift from low and medium density to more mixed use that is being mandated by the province, farm diversification and agritourism development, technology, climate adaptation, and just the sustainability of services. I mean, I look at our volunteer fire service. Council's been very clear. You want to maintain that volunteer fire service is important that we do. So these are all trends that municipalities are grappling with. Priorities. We will be developing and executing a 2018 to '22 council priority, document council priority exercise, taking into account what we've heard from members of council and that you've provided to us, and then the associated corporate work plans and projects that ensure we deliver on those theme areas. We're seeing expanded and continued strategic partnerships, strategic land use. We were in camera a few weeks back talking about where and how should we be looking at strategic land holdings. Revenue generation. We've been talking about revenue for a number of years now. What does that mean from a long-term financial sustainability perspective? Looking at our social and community infrastructure and continuing to create that customer service culture that, again, the previous council had as one of their priorities. We want to execute on stuff, get some stuff done. One of the other things I hear loud and clear is, we have a lot of good plans. Those plans are great. Thanks for giving us those plans, staff, but let's get some stuff done. So what does that look like? So executing on master plans, those strategies. Business improvements. How do we make things easier for people? You want us to bring you multi-year and forecasted budgets. Those are important things for you to have as you make decisions this year, next year, and beyond. We look at agenda management systems and processes. You know, I've heard comments around lean. I've heard other things that we should be looking at. And then just, how do we accommodate growth? The lens that I think as your senior management team, we've tried to look at, a number of the priorities in front of you on, or in the priority around growth and development. How do we address service? How do we continue to move things through the process quickly? How do we deliver services? What are the new and updated policies we need? Staff training. You've talked about a tourism strategy. You know, you've highlighted downtown revitalizations, Beamsville, Fine Land, some of the work we're doing in Jordan. Asset management, active transportation, complete streets. I heard traffic calming, road improvements, public transit. So we've got GO, GO bus service. We've got our own local transit service, and then we've got intermunicipal transit coming down the pipe from the region. Dave and his team have talked about INI, what we call influence infiltration, and then our emergency management program that we've addressed from a West Niagara standpoint. So what we heard from the community, I think dovetails into council's priorities, dovetails into, you know, what you've got before you. Folks want road network upgrades and maintenance. They want investment in sidewalks, bike lanes, pedestrian crossings. They want to get across to, get around the community and across the community safely. More investment in parks and green spaces. Newer expanded focus on economic development and tourism. Transit, both active and public transit. So all things that we've heard from the community. Again, just a little bit of an overview in terms of what we've heard from council, community asset investment, the trails and the parks, downtown revitalization, all things that I just highlighted throughout the presentation. Truck traffic, speed reduction, traffic calming, continued road rehab, road resurfacing, our shoreline strategy, green infrastructure. So next steps and considerations for council, and I think this is where we also want to hear from council as we finish this presentation in terms of what we're coming back with. Senior management, budget planning has been extensive. I shared that with all members of council when each of you came to see me in terms of the exercises that we're going through. Reviewing and looking at, can we find efficiencies? Can we continue to be creative in the way we deliver services? How do things align with council priorities, what we've heard from you? We've had meetings over the last two weeks. We've been trying to listen to council, hearing some of the priorities you have, reviewing all of the information. There's priorities that we've brought forward. There's inputs from SMT, again, in terms of some of those are one-on-one conversations that we've had from you. Some have been in conversations like this. How does that all play into the budget planning process? There are significant operating budget pressures. I think in each and every one of the meetings, at the end of the meeting, all of you asked me, "Okay, Mike, so what's the number look like?" You will have budget numbers and documents next week. We are aiming for, I believe it's February 6th, when I get to that slide, but there are significant operating budget pressures. Just the general cost of doing business has increased. I don't think, or I wouldn't want you to leave today not realizing and not hearing how those trends look and what it means from just delivering the regular course of business. There is continued catch-up. I know you're probably sick and tired of hearing me say, "Well, we're still playing catch-up." We are still playing catch-up. You see those trends of what's happened and where our taxes have been over, been at for the last 12 years, and I say 12 because I look at multiple terms. We've averaged about 4% increase. Yes, we were higher last term, but there is still significant catch-up to do. On top of that, there's growth that compounds that. Investing in our people. I recall in the one conversation with one particular ward when you met with me, we spent a lot of time talking about our people. What's it cost when people leave? What is the cost when we don't invest in our people? So training, learning, and development. You know, are those budgets that sometimes we look to cut? When budget years are tough, yes, but those are probably the last areas we should be cutting, because sometimes we don't look at the cost of retaining talent, attracting talent, and what that means to the organization and the productivity. So it is an important one, and that's why I highlight it. So based on these challenges, we will be coming back and presenting you options. We will be looking at a package for council as part of this year's operating budget that is informed by what we hear tonight. It'll look at needs and wants. We've heard that loud and clear as well. And we will look to address service-level expectations, what is affordable and what is not affordable. Again, some important dates in front of you. You will have next week, the draft operating budget. The following week, we will be having a budget presentation. You may have questions. You may send us back, like you have with capital and others, to get you more information, to present more business cases, whatever that looks like. February 20th, we're back in front of you again for an additional time, either bringing back that information, continuing to address and answer questions. We will have presentations from our ABCs, our agencies, boards, and commissions in terms of their asks, in terms of just a general presentation that they have. And then we will be looking to schedule a council meeting to hopefully ratify the budget shortly thereafter. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to go through the presentation, and we will address any questions committee may have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mike, for your presentation, quite sobering, but quite enlightening at the same point. So I will ask committee for any questions, and we'll go around and figure this out. Mayor Easton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mike, for the presentation. I do have a question, but I'd like to make a couple of comments. I think that, I guess we've heard everything that's on these pages sometime in the last four years, and so it's a bit concerning to me that we're still going over some of the same material. And we can pick a number at any time, and we can say, "Yeah, that's too much," or "That's not enough." But from the reading that I've been doing in the last couple of months, it's not about what the number is. It's what about, what those things are that we are doing in this corporation to make sure that we can manage in the future. Now, Mr. Chairman, at the beginning of the last term, some of the things that I knew about slowing things down to make things work included lots of red tape, finding reasons to say no, taking minimum or no risks, basically doing everything the same, and sometimes even pulling the sheets over your head so you didn't have to pay attention to the tension that was out there. So now I'm looking for something quite different, because we try not to do any of those things anymore, and that's been a lot of hard work, particularly on the part of staff. So I'm concerned that you're going to bring us a number, and we're going to wrestle with that number, and that's as good as it's going to get, and I'm going to be one person who's very dissatisfied. So I also look at this phrase, "needs versus wants." I'd like to see needs versus wants removed from any budget, intelligent budget discussion, because it implies that the solution is in that one area. It's like saying that when something is on time and on budget, that that is the only quality indicator that's important, and we know that that's not the case. So I look at things that you have under the priorities, like multi-year forecasted budgets, and I've learned something about those. And we talked about those in about year two, looking that as a way of getting a much more holistic view. So what are we going to know when you bring the budget about multi-year forecasted budgets? What are we going to know about distribution as a role in revenue generation? Because paying-as-you-go, even in a community of this size, is not very realistic from when I look at that gap. What are we going to do about risk management? Are we where we want to, where we want to be? Because when you give us the number, risk management is going to have to be part of that decision-maker. And when I've looked at those budgets over the last 10 years and seen that roller coaster effect, it certainly doesn't give you a warm and fuzzy feeling about stability. So these are some of the things that, that I'm looking at. And so I don't, I don't want to complain, but it's my question. My question is, you know, what are we going to, how will we go into picking the number, or debating the number, Mr. Chairman, if we don't have some of this context to help us out? So that's really the core of my question, Mr. Chairman.
Three, Mr. Chairman. So I agree with a lot of the comments that the mayor made. I think they're important comments. They're important considerations that we need to look at. You're right. I think I've always wrestled. I don't think in 20 years I've figured out how to, you know, what is the magic pill in terms of how to tell the story and not deal with percentages or the number, because I think that is unfortunately what a lot of municipalities do. We have talked to you about financial sustainability and coming back with a very fulsome plan on what financial sustainability looks like. The mayor highlighted multi-year budgets. Multi-year budgets work when you've got your house in order, your collective house in order, and by that I mean you have got budgets that are appropriately set, and then each year, following that kind of, that setting of the stage, you look at things. People talk about zero-based budgets. People talk about a whole bunch of things on budgets. Zero-based budgets remove... People talk about a whole bunch of things on budgets. Zero-based budgets remove those, those things that are uncontrollable. They remove those things that are mandated and legislated, and then they present you budgets. Those are all things that we will look to start bringing before council, and you can make a consideration in terms of what budget process you have. Are we there in terms of some of these things? No, we're not. I think we've continued to have the conversation. There's been a historic view, not only in Lincoln, but I would suggest in Niagara, as it relates to debt. There are a number of white papers that we're starting to read and look at. I look at Edmonton, who's a leader in terms of looking at the way they've changed their budget process from the 80s and 90s, when it was simply pay-as-you-go. That is not sustainable. When you look at charts that I've showed you around infrastructure deficits, we need to start looking at, how are we paying for assets? How are we paying for facilities over a 40-year life cycle? Council Mickelik shared with me, he went to Pelham today. Looked at their multi-agency, multi-use facility. Beautiful facility. He was singing the praises of it. Council Reimer joked he should run in Pelham next, because the facility was that great. I say that because, you know, I think when you look at facilities and you look at a pay-as-you-go model, and you don't have the appropriate policies and readying your community for, how are you going to make investments? How are you going to pay for them in the long term? Debt is not a bad word. There are certain things that long-term borrowing absolutely makes sense for. If we were in the position, I don't think any municipality is in a position just to spend $15 million on a facility and say, we'll pay for it all right now, and then not worry about the future. That is not what we want to have before you. So, I don't have a simple answer for you, Mayor Easton, in terms of, next week, you're going to receive numbers. You're going to receive, I think, challenges. You're going to receive a budget that has all this, and then you're going to deliberate over the coming month in terms of what that looks like. We can bring back some more indications of where we're at from a debt perspective, I think, as part of that financial sustainability plan. We do want to update our debt policy. We want to update the way we do capital, for example. You know, every year, we have a small increase as it relates to the construction price index. You may want to look at different ways of doing that. We need to give you eyes-wide-open information. Here's what it costs. Here's how you fund it. And then council will have to make a decision. You'll see as part of this budget, we are putting money into reserves. We are putting money into the bank. Yes, it's hard to levy, but the right thing to do is to put money in the bank. The right thing to do is saving. The right thing to do is preparing for the future. We have an infrastructure levy. You know, could we lower the impact to taxpayers by removing 1.5% in terms of that infrastructure levy? Absolutely, we can. Is that the right thing to do? Absolutely not. Angela would tell you it isn't. I would tell you it isn't. You should be putting money away for the future, because there will be a CAO, an SMT, a council that is here, two, three councils from now, or five councils from now, that may look back and say, well, what kind of decisions were they making? Why weren't they planning for the future? So, I'm probably a little bit on my soapbox there, Mayor Easton, in terms of preparing for the future. And, you know, as much as I would love to say we've got debt distribution figured out, that risk matrix figured out in terms of risk management, we're working on it. We're, it is real time, and we're continuing to evolve, but are we there yet? No, we're not. And so, we will do our best to bring back, I think, some of those lenses and matrices for you in terms of the deliberations and answer those questions, but we don't have all of that. Your comment about quality indicators, I think is important as well. It's easy to say, we're doing X or we're doing Y. Are we doing it well? Do we deliver X facility well? Does it have everything it needs in it? Or is it just on budget and on time? And so, all important pieces.
Council Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the CAO. When will we have an idea of what the regional budget and also the DSBN budget would be? Just, again, because we're only making up a little bit less than one-third. I've heard rumors that the region's going to go in very heavy, so just trying to find out what that blend rate will be and overall impact.
So through you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if Ange has a better indication in terms of timing. I know the region is still dealing with their capital budget. As it stands right now, I think end of February is when they're looking at, probably dovetailing to us. I know Ange said to the senior management team this morning, she believes the region's going to be somewhere in that 3% to 5%. That is just simply at a, you know, from a staff-to-staff perspective. I mean, Mayor Easton may be able to speak to it more politically, but a 3% to 5% increase as it relates to the region is challenging. That's a lot higher. That's double, if not, two and a half times higher than the region has been in the last six years.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The school board rates usually come from the province around April. So we're anticipating the same timeframe.
But you know what? We can't use that as an excuse to get us off the rails that we are on. We do this time and time again. We worry about what the region is going to do. And then we turtle. And then we pull back. And then we do what we always do. And we can't do that, because that's not doing anyone a service. It's actually doing them a disservice. This 0% budgeting, this taking reserves and spending is fiscally irresponsible. And I appreciate the paper, Mike, you shared with me today about Edmonton. And I got about a third of the way through it, and, you know, they're talking about ways to do things differently. There's probably some philosopher that said this, but I'm not sure, but you know what? Doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result is insanity. You need to make change. You need to take a bold step. You need to be different. Because if you don't, you aren't going to manage change, and you aren't going to get any change. And, you know, things like when we go to AMO, and we hear that the city of Edmonton turned their water system into utility, that then the proceeds from that utility were able to fund a myriad of things. Not just water and wastewater, but a myriad of things to close that information gap. I think these are the things that we're looking for. The outside-of-the-box thinking. How can we come and deliver an 8% increase, which we need, but we're not going to do, but we should? And I say that we should, is because, you know what? Let's go back and let's look at those things. Let's get, let's get our user fees all on the same page. Why does the museum and the library and the different parks all have different user fees for relatively the same things? We need to have standardized rates. We need to have a look at those. You know, we saw those fees and services increases, you know, a dollar an hour here. You know what? Let's look at those. If you want to deliver those services, and we've said this time and time again at budget time, come to us with a revenue stream. Come to us and make a business case. Because simply doing what we do and expecting it to be different, it's not going to happen. And I think one of the things, too, as a counselor, and, you know, having discussions around the table, and, you know, Mike, I love the, I love the chart here with uncontrollable and controllable expenses. But the thing that raises the ire of not only the taxpayer, but the counselors, and if it's in the weeds, so be it, is, you know, we're tasked for demand for government accountability and performance. But we expect that same accountability and performance with respect to the contracts we dole out. You know, snow removal, things like that. When it's not met, and Council Mickelik, you provided, you know, some great framing on this, you know, before we entered the budget. Clean the roads, snow removal, garbage removal, grass cutting. Right? They're all expenses that aren't controllable, but they're the things that the people see the most. And a lot of times, they're contracted out. And how do we hold that contract accountable? And I think, you know, it's, whether it's laying out the parameters, whether it's following up, and it's things like that, but it's just, you know, it's, we need, we need to do it differently, and we need to do it better. And we can't be afraid to take a leap of faith. We can't be afraid to do what's right for our town, knowing that that gap is there. And don't fixate on a number. I say fixate on the service delivery. I say fixate on how you're going to change things. And it's up to us to sell it. And it's up to us to be innovative, and it's up to us to chart a new course. I'm off my soapbox. Thank you. Any other questions? I figured that would spur some discussion. Council Mickelik.
Through you, Chair, to CAO. I just, I was impressed with your presentation. I love those numbers of the construction booths there. More than doubling, actually smashed it. And I thought that was a pretty impressive number. The other numbers that I noticed, like, you know, with regards to, you know, the salary, the negotiated salary increase, you know, for the people here is 1.7%. So, when inflation's up 2%, you know, we're not making more. The average person's not making more money. They're, they're not able to keep up. They're not able to save. And all I'm asking on behalf of the taxpayers is that staff does the best they can to ensure value for service and dollar to the taxpayers and, you know, to the people in town. It's, being a new counselor, it's an eye-opening experience for myself. It's been a pleasure being part of this, and, you know, the team that I see before us is, I'm pretty confident that they're going to do the best they can to satisfy, make the people in town happy. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kirkopolis. So, I see there being no further discussion. We'll require a mover for the motion to receive and file this item. Council Russell, all in favor? Carried. There is no confidential items this evening. Any further staff remarks? There being no further business, I call this meeting adjourned.